Good evening, everyone. We'll call the June 8th, 2022 Vol. 4 meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take roll call. Trustee Pierce.
President.
Trustee Mason is absent. Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Bluthard.
Here.
Trustee Berman is absent. Trustee Dominia.
Here.
And Mayor Gardner is absent. So since we do not have Mayor Gardner here, he is attending his daughter's graduation, I would ask for a motion and a second to appoint Mayor Pro Tem.
I move the point Mary Dominia.
I second.
I have a trust, a motion by trustee Bluthard, a second by trustee Peterson, and discussion? Trustee Pierce.
I, I got no discussion.
And trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the mayoral report. And before I move into the acknowledgements, I just want to read a restatement from the mayor. I am sorry I cannot attend tonight's important village board meeting. If this note is being read to you, my oldest daughter is participating in our eighth grade graduation. It is important for me to include my voice of support with tonight's board reaffirmation of the resolution to support the welcoming and inclusive community pledge number seventeen dash seventeen, which was originally approved on March twentieth, twenty seventeen. It is important for all residents of our town to feel like their voices will be heard. As a village board, we need to take a proactive responsibility of ensuring that no one feels targeted or excluded just because of who they are. Antioch is a welcoming community, and tonight's actions serve as an important message. Thank you. Scott Gardner. Okay, a couple other acknowledgements that are on the agenda. First of all, we want to acknowledge that this June is Pride Month, celebrating the LGBTQ A+. Juneteenth, which is June nineteenth, which recognizes the emancipation of enslaved African American. We have Father's Day coming around the corner very quickly. We also have Flag Day coming up next week. And I wanted to also just acknowledge today the success of the Antioch Community High School varsity softball team. I have a message here from Lisa Fisher. They are going to state, they're going tomorrow, no, Friday. They will be coming home with either first, second, third, or fourth in state this weekend. They are going to be leaving tomorrow at noon, and so if anybody wants to go by the high school at eleven thirty, they're going to give a routing send off to them. Their record is twenty-nine and three, and two of those losses were to higher class teams. So we'll have to be rooting for them this weekend. Okay, the first, next item on the agenda is citizens wishing to address the board. There's a couple ways we can do this. Normally, at this time, people that want to address anything that's not on the agenda can speak. So if you have something that you want to address the board that's not on the agenda, you can do so now. And it looks like Mr. Omara would like to speak.
I'll let the other talk first.
Everybody else is speaking to an agenda item. So if you could just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Michael Mera, and just after I just wanted to question whether that, you have a legal form?
Actually, there's three of us, but I'll let the attorney address that.
Under the Open Meeting Act, there's a, there's a section seven that deals with remote meetings, and it is, this meeting is, is, there is a form under, under section seven. There is a declaration made by the governor of the disaster, and there's also been a declaration on fair, and it's being satisfied.
No word yet?
No.
My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Omara. Anyone else want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any trustee that would like to remove any item that's on the consent agenda? If not, I'd like a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Bluthard. Any discussion?
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. Motion carry. For voting, yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is a consideration approval of payment of a commons payable is prepared by staff in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second by trustee Bluthard, second by trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. Motion carry. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is a consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the Antioch Library use of William Brook Entertainment Center and closure of Skidmore Drive. We need a motion and a second? So move. Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard. Any discussion? We have a member of the library staff here. If anybody has any questions, or if you roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is a consideration and approval of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to coronavirus. I need a motion and a second, waiting the second reading. So move. My trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second by trustee Bluthard. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item is a consideration and approval of a resolution approving a facade grant request for nine hundred Main Street in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Resolution number twenty-two dash forty-seven. So move.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Director Garrigan, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. This is made out of constituency for facade grants for property on Main Street. On this property, actually, one of the more oldest historical buildings on Main Street. It's a art deco building.
I'm sorry, can, can you speak into the microphone, Mr. Garrigan?
Yes, I'm sorry. This building itself is one of the most historic buildings on Main Street. And this has actually been identified as potentially a future of Anamark, according to our urban survey. As you know, we have a facade program. The applicant is actually in the process of opening up a new restaurant on Main Street, a new Caribou Restaurant. So we look forward to seeing that happen. But as part of that proposed new business, the applicant is specifically coming for you for facade grants. What they're seeking this, this evening is an opportunity to install a new awning. We have, again, approved awnings as part of facade grants program. In addition, there is some damage to the terracotta. This building is unique. It's an art deco building with all terracotta. There's some chip areas which need to be repaired and painted. In addition, the applicant is looking to just simply reface the existing box sign at this time. So overall, the overall proposal is approximately fifty-three hundred dollars. In accordance with the facade program, it would be fifty percent of that, which comes to two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So the actual applicants actually here this evening, if there's any specific questions, but staff is making recommend favorable accommodations evening that we approve the facade grant.
Thank you, Director Garrigan. Any discussion?
I have one item, Your Honor. I would like to ask that in the future, any facade grants have the generic name on there. Not everybody in town knows where the specific address is in. So if it's like the old library building, or the old schoolhouse, or the old Chinese restaurant or something, it'd be nice to kind of have a, a generic kind of representation of what it is, not just the street address.
Thank you. Director Garrigan, which building is this?
This is actually, this was, I think, commonly known as the Canton Tea Garden, which was business, I believe, from the late sixties, several years ago. Originally, the building was constructed in nineteen forties. I don't recall the actual dress store, but it goes back to nineteen forties.
I believe it was Mary Ann's Dress Store.
Mary Ann's Dress Store. So for the record, this was Mary Ann's Dress Store in nineteen forties, and from, from nineteen sixties, it was the Canton Tea Garden.
But Mary wasn't here in nineteen forties when it was Mary Ann's. Trustee Bluthard?
I just had one, one question or comment, I guess. Am I reading this proposal right? The awning is going to have the logo and the name on it? And then they're making another small piece that's going to go on top of that sign that says the exact same thing? Or am I reading that wrong?
Well, I'm not, I have not seen the actual final design for the box sign, but there will be, they'll simply replace the actual sign face on the box sign. So the applicant's actually here, maybe she can, maybe provide some additional information pertaining to what that additional box sign will entail. So, and I think we have some discussions about signage. So maybe the applicant is the best individual to provide some additional illumination for why they're seeking to reuse that box sign. So that, Quinta, is that?
Am I going to answer a question?
Yes, right here.
I'm sorry, can I get your name, please?
Quinta Antemire.
The question I had was, your intention is the, basically duplicating what's on the awning on that little yellow sign that's not going to be illuminated, correct?
That is correct.
Was there any thought of removing the sign?
We thought about it, but in the game, it creates more damage to the building. So that's probably the most reason why.
Okay, I was wondering if there was that.
I just want to
tiles underneath it.
Yeah, we don't know what, what we're going to find out then.
You know, I take it down.
So it's just as well leave it at all.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I have no other questions or comments. Roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter III, Section one dash three dash one, and Title VII, Chapter III, Section seven dash three dash five, and seven dash three, one eighteen of the Antioch Village Code regulating handicap parking and imposing fines for violations. Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh six dash thirty-three. I need a motion and a second, waiting the second reading.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Waiting the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, Pierce made the motion, seconded by trustee Bluthard. Any discussion?
I think this is a no-brainer.
Okay. No more further discussion. I need roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. The next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution to support the welcoming and inclusive community pledge and reaffirming resolution number seventeen dash seventeen, approved March twentieth, twenty seventeen, resolution number twenty-two dash forty-eight. Need a motion and a second?
So move.
Second, motion by trustee Bluthard, second by trustee Peterson. Okay, I have a couple people here that would like to speak to the board on this. I think we'll do that first, and then the board can add their comments. The first person on the agenda is Susan McQuiston. Can you come up to the podium, please?
My name is Susan McCushen. I've been a resident at Antioch for, that's okay. I'm used to it, for twenty years, and I will email this statement just so it can be included in whole officially in the, in the meeting moments, in the meeting minutes. The welcoming inclusive community pledge consists of a few simple statements directed towards creating a world that I would hope that we all want. One of respect, belonging, and understanding for ourselves and our fellow human beings. Throughout the course of this week, I have changed my mind probably a hundred times about what I wanted to say tonight, and I have come to the conclusion that three minutes is not going to change anyone's mind who hasn't already decided on how they want to vote. So what I want to do is just kind of make a couple comments here around things that I do know. And what I do know for sure is that if we could stop the extremist arguments on both the left and the right, we might see that diversity is simply difference. And we might discover that inclusion means everyone, regardless of their differences. It means accepting these differences even and especially when we don't agree with them. It's important all people feel welcome and safe in our village. We're all human. We all want to be respected. We all love our families. So I think it's important that we use these commonalities to connect us while also honoring the many differences that make each of us unique. So I just really do want to express a thank you in advance to those trustees who do vote yes to some things. Thanks.
Thank you. Just have one question. Okay, I just want to ask the, pull the board as to whether they have any objections to attaching her statement to the meeting minutes for the record.
No objection.
No objections.
Okay, thank you. Next person on the agenda is Mr. Stephen Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Cooper. I've also been in Antioch for twenty years now. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no, but probably not for the reason you might think. It has nothing to do with the pledge itself, but everything to do with the premise of the resolution. If you boil the pledge down, it's all about not being a racist bigot or homophobe, then that's great. But the premise of the resolution suggests that you are these things. Everyone, automatically, you're a racist bigot, homophobe, right now, unless you redeem yourselves tonight by voting yes. And if you do that, then you get taken off the naughty list. But if you don't do that, you're on the naughty list. You need to reject the premise. Don't accept the premise that you're automatically guilty, and you have to prove yourself innocent. That's extortion. You didn't make a resolution promising not to shoplift, not to sell drugs on the corner, not to murder anybody. So why would you make a resolution promising not to be a racist bigot or homophobe? I don't assume you're shoplifters, drug dealers, or murderers, just like I don't assume you're a racist bigot or homophobe. But that's the premise. And trustee Berman's been libeled on Facebook over this. She's been declared guilty no matter what, and you must unanimously reject this resolution for that reason. It has nothing to do with the pledge. No, no complaints about the pledge. It's about the premise. I'm probably being trash right now as someone who's criticizing a pledge, but I haven't criticized it. I just have an issue with the logical fallacy of the premise that either you agree with the resolution or you're automatically a bad person. There's no in-between. But you don't need to prove to me that you're good people. I know you are. You don't have to pinky swear it to me in the form of a resolution. This resolution is political theater. It's catering to special interests. It's virtue signaling. Look at me, I'm a good person. I support the pledge. You can support the pledge, but you should not be forcing a resolution on everybody to, to make, show them that they're good people. You must have the courage to vote no. Now, the person on Facebook who always trashes trustee Berman, she invited all of Lake County to come here and speak up about inclusion. And I find that highly ironic, because the resolution is not inclusive at all. It's exclusive. Either you support it or get out. That's the opinion of those people who claim they're inclusive. Either vote yes, or we will destroy you politically. There's nothing welcoming about that. This resolution is dividing us. It's not uniting us. It's not having its, its intended purpose at all. It's having a direct opposite effect. So I ask you to unanimously vote no for that reason alone. Nothing to do with the pledge. Everything to do with the premise of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. And lastly, Mr. Paul Blue?
Thank you. I'm Paul Blue. I've lived in Antioch for twenty-five years, in two seventy-five, nine, four. I just came to say that I've read the statement. I've read the pledge, and I wanted to voice support for it. I have no less respect for any of my neighbors or anybody on the board who would vote against it, but I think it's a good pledge, and, and I agree with every clause in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. That's all who signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to? Then open the door to the trustees for discussion. Trustee Pierce?
My first question, and I'm glad we had a question earlier about the quorum, because I think it's important that we do this properly. And so I'm glad the attorney confirms that under the Emergency Act, we have a, a proper quorum. And I, I appreciate the fact that the mayor is with his daughter who is graduating. There's nothing more important than family. I, I wonder where the other trustees are, because they gave no indication of where they are. I usually, when I'm not there, indicate where I'm at to let the board know what my reason for missing is. But as I said, the mayor being with his daughter is very important, because that's family. This pledge to me is not about proving any political points or doing any theater. It's about saying what I think is right and being family. All of us in Lake County are family. And whether we're going to a daughter's graduation, a son's graduation, somebody getting married to somebody, supporting veterans who need help, all of this pledge says we are all humans, and we all need to accept each other as we are. And I think that's very important, because there's nothing worse than feeling like you're not accepted. So I, I support this pledge, and I will vote yes for this pledge tonight, because I'm, I'm proud to be part of Lake County who is diverse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Trustee Peterson? I would, excuse me, I would just like to say that this is not political theater. This is only telling people who live here that we, we are all in this together. How many times have we heard that in the last two years? But we really are. And we care about each other's children. We care about each other's families. We don't care where you come from. We don't care what religion you are. We don't care about any of that. We care if you obey our laws. Welcome. Come to Antioch and live. It's a great place to live. And it's my honor to, to vote for this. That's all I have. Thank you, trustee Peterson. Trustee Bluthard?
I'm going to have a lot to say on this. It's, it's, I want to echo what other trustees have said or our speakers have said, because they've all made very good points. And when I look at this pledge and I read this pledge, there's nothing in the pledge itself that I disagree with. So it's an easy yes vote for me on that, on that purpose. I hate what's happening in regards to the far left and the far right, and how this is becoming a political issue that's impacting our town. This village isn't political, or it shouldn't be. What we decide up here as a board is what's for the best for the whole community. And that's the way I'm looking at this. And I hope that my friends that support this resolution, the friends that don't, will respect my decision to vote yes. And I think this is just a step forward. I don't see anything in this resolution that is troublesome to me, and I probably will yes and vote.
Thank you, trustee Bluthard. It would be hard for me to come up with anything else to say in support of this other than I am in support of it. I was a supporter of it back in twenty seventeen, when we voted on this, and no one asked us about it. No one came in and said, yes, this is great. No one came in and said, no, you shouldn't do this. What I will say is that I believe we should be welcoming, and I don't feel any pressure that I have to vote for this in order to prove that I'm not anything other than who I am. Certainly, I voted no and yes on things that people disagreed with. I would be very disappointed if I went to Facebook after this meeting and found that anybody who's either here or not here is being belittled, chastised, or remarked upon for their political beliefs, whether I believe and agree with them or not. So I am in support of this, and I am eager to call the vote on this so that we can move forward and send the message that Antioch is a wonderful place to live, no matter who you are. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, then a roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is consideration approval of a resolution awarding a contract to Kane and Dolan for the twenty twenty-two road program in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and seven cents. Resolution number twenty-two dash forty-nine. I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second trustee Bluthard, second trustee Peterson. Mr. Kine, do you have any comments that you want to share with us before we discuss?
I think about seven hundred budgeted for this. It's obviously over that. I'm expecting higher bids at a similar size. I intend to contain this expenditure of all the field tax. We'll probably have to put some general money here to do this road program. We're going to, as typically we do, we'll bring in the program cheaper than bid amount. There's, there's usually excess quantities that we don't have to utilize. I expect that to be the case. So I don't think we're going to make the full eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, but it was. I expect it to come in closer, closer to seven ninety, somewhere in there. And you're basically going to be appropriately appropriated. You have appropriation for this, which is the real thing you have to do. And will we spend a little bit more money than we thought?
Thank you. Trustee Pierce, any comments?
I'd just like to read into the record what the exact roads are, so that the residents who are listening know what roads are being done. Mr. Kine?
The roads, the resurfacing program for this year are Hillside from Blackland Terrace, North Avenue, Poplar Avenue. It's the west part of Poplar going into Woods, Antioch, Summerlin Drive, that's in Tiffany Farms, Meridian Way, Acadilly Lane, Turnberry Lane. All of those, I believe, are Tiffany Farms. And then we're paving a few more roads, Sequoie Terrace, Alima Terrace, Phillips Circle, and Blackland Terrace. So we're doing a lot of paving in Tiffany Farms and in Sequoie Terrace.
Thank you. Anything else, trustee Pierce?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson? I have no comments. You don't have any comments. Thank you, Administrator Kine. I'll take roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is consideration approval of a resolution accepting an engagement letter with Miller Canfield relating, related to the issuance of alternate, alternate revenue source general obligation bond to fund capital projects, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty. I need a motion and a second. So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Pierce. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes. For voting yes, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting an underwriting disclosure letter from Robert W. Baird related to the issuance of alternate revenue source general obligation bonds to finance capital projects, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-one. I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Motion trustee Bluthard, second. Trustee Peterson? Administrator Kine, do you need to share anything with us, or?
Based on the bond issue, we're contemplating, these are the engagement letters to retain the appropriate bond team to represent not only the village, but represent the underwriters, and, and to provide disclosure counsel, which is required, to enact this, this bond issue. So these are the prerequisite. The board is basically accepting these folks as the ones who can help us.
Thank you. Any discussion? Trustee Pierce?
No discussion, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Pierce.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Ominia.
Yes, for voting yes, motion carried. Okay, last item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond, alternate revenue source, Series 2022 of the Village of Antioch, Lake County, Illinois, in the aggregate principal amount of $1,250,000 to finance, one, the cost of the redevelopment plan and project in connection with the village's Route 83 redevelopment project area, two, the cost of the business district plan and project in connection with the village's east business district, and three, the cost of the business district plan and project in connection with the village's central business district, namely, the cost of land acquisition and the construction of public works and improvements, the municipal public buildings, public roadway, water, sanitary sewers, storm sewer, sidewalk, parking, car, recreation, food mitigation and drainage, and utilities improvements, together with related pertinences, all electrical, professional, financial, bond registrar, legal, mechanical, and other services necessary, useful or advisable to such acquisition and development, and incidental to set improvements to pay bond discount, bond interest, financing, and administrative expenses. Ordinance number 22-06-34, that was longer than the rest of the meeting. I need a motion, second, waving, and second reading.
Come on.
So moved, motion by trustee Luther, second by trustee Peterson. Waving, second. A waving, second, yes. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pierce.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Ominia.
Yes, for voting yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is administrator's report, administrator Kane.
Thank you, your honor. So the wastewater clarifier that has had basically buckled floor, just giving you an update on that real quick, I have authorized the installation of groundwater monitoring wells or piezometers to install on these tanks so that we can understand what's happening with the groundwater. I believe groundwater is what the pressures and forces that buckle the floor of this tank. I've consulted with civil engineers, I have another engineer coming out, and in addition to that, based on some of director Heimbro's sleuthing and records, and he was able to find a dewatering stand pipe that was used during construction. It was not exposed to the surface. But based on some photography and some knowledge we have from that time, we were able to find a stand pipe. It's a plastic piece of sewer, probably 16 or 18 inches around, in close proximity to the tank. And he hydroexcavated, found it, it was filled, so we unfilled it, and it was about 24 feet down. The good news is, is we're able to extract groundwater and dewater the site, so we dropped a pump in it, and we're currently dewatering, and we see we have an influence groundwater. It's a certain temporary. I've been talking to other dewatering companies, I think really what we need to solve the problem of controlling groundwater. I have some rather high estimates, and there's some salesmanship involved in what we actually need, but once we have the piezometers installed, we'll be able to monitor. We think we dropped the groundwater a couple of feet in a couple of days pumping with a two-inch pump. If that's the case, and I suspect these tanks influence each other, I don't expect there's any rubble soil here, I think we have built these tanks in close proximity with a lot of gravel around them, so I think we're going to be able to influence groundwater on all the tanks, possible one well, but I'm going to get some expert opinion on that from hydrogeologists and our civil engineers. Once we understand this a little bit better, I will probably make another recommendations on what we do to this tank. In addition, we're having the manufacturing equipment come out to inspect and tell us if the equipment's okay. So we're still in a discovery phase, we're operating okay for now, and just more to come on this. The expenditure so far that I've made is about $15,000 to install these final wells.
Thank you, administrator Kane, anything else? Mr. Moran.
Good evening, as you guys know, before I started working with those in Antioch, by the way, I'm you, Moran, I'm the communication specialist of the village. The idea was created by the altogether marketing group that the guys contracted with to come up with ideas of bringing new people into Antioch to create Antioch as a destination. So part of that plan was the creation of a hub website or a tourism or destination website. We've been working on that, and the good news is we're just about ready to get it launched and get it up and running, and hopefully create an online resource for people looking to travel to this part of the county. My question for you guys, and I sent an email out about a week ago, and I'll send another email to the board tomorrow with a link to the website, I would love your feedback, especially around a couple areas, when it comes to listing of businesses and events and that sort of thing, about giving priority to Antioch. We could kind of travel two different ways, you could give priority to Antioch businesses, or have a regional approach for, it's kind of mixed together, businesses or destinations out of the township or other areas, the upper Chelanx region or this part of the county, or again, have the priority to village, things that are within the village, whether it's business listings or events, also how we list people, whether it's health and medical, you'll see on the website right now, we have some businesses that are featured, and then some that are below that, smaller icons, but I'd love your feedback, that's something we can rotate people through the section, make it more equitable thing. But I'd love your feedback on whether you like it like that, or you want it, or it's health and medical, and everybody's the same size, and that's.
So what is your plan of launching?
So once we get this verified with you guys, we'll be, you know, it won't just take a matter of picking it up, and we'll be ready to launch. So if I can hear from the board by next Wednesday, hopefully it's launched by then or peak, so I'm excited to get this on the floor.
Thank you, I think it's an exciting project, and timing is perfect because it's summer, and that's where everybody wants to visit, and all have change, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, Golds clerk, and a court. Any trustee reports, trustee Pierce?
Your honor, just real quickly, Public Works, just a couple updates, we'll get a formal report from Dennis real shortly, but he did want everybody to know that last week the Public Works did a lot of work in the senior center, which you guys saw open up this week. A lot of that work was done by volunteers, but Public Works went in there, and they did things such as removal of unused items and furniture, they did wall patching and worked on the painting of the interior, so Public Works was actively involved in any renovations of the senior center, and I wanted to just say that I appreciate their efforts, and I hope the rest of the board does too. Last week, the crews have spent a lot of time working on the downtown area, trying to make the village hall look nice, and landscaping the tank, street clock, and the PD property, they've been working on cleaning up downtown, getting it spiffed up for the summer after a hard spring. They did have the streets swept last week, but just like I finished mowing my lawn and my neighbor's silver maple dropped all its helicopters on my yard and coated my yard, they did the same downtown where we had swept, so this morning Public Works went down and washed down the sidewalks downtown, so they were a little clearer of the tree droppings. And then people who have sidewalks that are lifting, or need lifting, or shifting, the ones that have been identified, Public Works has put out a bid to have them reproperly positioned with lifting, or whatever they do to adjust a sidewalk. So there are, we are working on the identified sidewalks that need some work. Other than that, I have nothing else, your honor.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I just want to congratulate the FOP on a successful golf outing and dinner, it was a lot of fun to be there and see our police force united with so many of their friends and all of us, and enjoying the evening, it was very successful. I also want to applaud our police department for their continuing efforts to remind people to lock their cars at night, because obviously we have a rash of, that's occurring primarily in the eastern part of town, it's quick access out to 173, so I don't know if anybody has any ideas on how we can get that message out to everybody to lock up, that would be terrific. The only other thing that I want to say is, you know, there's six of us that sit up here and one more with the mayor, and we don't all always agree on things, and that's why we have the right to vote the way we think, what we think is best for the community. I've been doing this for over 11 years now, and it really, and I know it sounds a little corny, but it breaks my heart, but there are people on this dais who are being attacked for their beliefs. We all have beliefs that we want Antioch to be the best place to live, and I'm just hoping that on both sides of the issues that we are facing, not just here, but nationally, can calm down the rhetoric and figure out a way that we can all, you know, quote Rodney and Kate, get along, so I just, I'm hopeful that that's going to happen.
So that's all I have, and unless there's any other business, I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce, own favor.
Pierce.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Ominia.
Yes, for voting yes, motion carried, thank you all.